To call this meeting to order, please stand for the invocation by council member by a council member.
Good evening, everyone. I want to wish everyone a very merry Christmas. We live in troubled times, so it will be a difficult season. Tonight, I want everybody to think about members of our armed forces, young men and women deployed all over the world. There's people being deployed in some god awful places that, for security reasons, we're not being told, obviously. But they're kind of on their own. I have a friend, his son, who I know very closely. He's in one of the African nations. They can't even act like Americans. They all have long hair, beards, a lot of problems there. They're protecting us from ISIS, doing what they can. So we just need to think about them. And right now, in Iraq, we're going to have several thousand troops staying there permanently. Very dangerous place. This is a very short prayer. May God bless the soldiers and their families that won't be home for Christmas. Remember them in our prayers. They are the reason we are at home with ours. Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for it.
First order of business is the motion of 93 to 2021. Mr. Wykowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution appointing Tammy Schmidt to City Council as the sixth ward council member.
Second by Mr. Dealey. Any questions or concerns?
I'd just like to state, Mr. President, a municipal charter is a basic document that defines the organization, powers, functions, and essential procedures of city government. I know there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of publicity, talk back and forth. I just want everyone to realize this document is comparable to the Constitution of the United States. It is the most important legal document that the city has. We have to buy by, we are obligated to buy by the charter as printed with no exceptions. So that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Council member Wykowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
Dealey?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Is someone who would like to square in the council member?
You're up, Heidi.
Do you have anything you'd like to come up?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tammy Schmidt, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, the Constitution of the State of New York, and the City Charter of the City of Batavia, New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member until December 31st, 2022.
Motion to adjourn the special business. Mr. Dealey, seconded by Mr. Wykowski. Call the roll, please.
Council member Dealey?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wykowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes.
I also order the regular conference meeting. Public comments. All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium. Each speaker will state their name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. The first bell means you have 30 seconds left. The second bell means your time is up and we will be forced to stop you at that point.
Rosemary Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. I am here on behalf of Tammy Schmidt. I just want you to know that she's going to do an outstanding job for the sixth ward. She is very articulate. She certainly knows the budget process. She is in accounting also, and I just want to thank her for taking my position because she's going to do a great job. Thank you.
John Roach?
John Roach, Grand B. Terrace. Just two questions. A while ago, the talk was Oevka, the ponds, and then it just kind of died out. The ponds renewed themselves. Is Oevka discharging again? Is that whole thing solved? All of a sudden, we never heard anything more about it. The other question came up earlier. This is the last meeting in a year. Did councils decide informally just to let the issue lie and we're going to approve the marijuana distribution, the sales? I kind of hope you do, but when it came up once before, the council had said, well, we're going to talk about it, discuss it, and then it just died out. And I believe tonight might be the last night you have a shot at saying yes or no. If you don't do anything, we're automatically in. So maybe you could enlighten us which way you're going. Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Any response on Oevka? And are we able to discuss anything about Oevka?
I'll address Oevka if I could, Council President. Oevka has been subject to constant review since the matter arose, as well as discussions with DEC relative to the status of the discharges. The city staff internally, the staff through the engineering firm supporting the city have been on top of the matter, reviewing the discharges, reviewing the pond recovery. It's still an ongoing process. We don't discuss pending matters that involve potential for litigation, but I can say with certainty, the city and the engineers are doing everything necessary to address the matter to the satisfaction of DEC and to make sure that the ponds and the infrastructure are fully operational and supported for the community.
And another comment I'd like to add. In reference to the marijuana, I guess I can start it off, Bob can jump right in. I have received no complaints about it, only people advising me to, you know, get the tax money, that the state has already made the law and we really have no control over that at this point. So they've advising me, they don't like it, but it's better to have the money to cover any problems we may have or we don't know about yet for treatment or whatever. I don't know. Whatever we would do with the money, it's up to council. But most of the people, not one person said not to accept it. So I just let it go. That's why I didn't bring it up. So if anyone else, Bob, you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Also, I've received some positive comments, and I was just informed recently how many people do occasionally enjoy the benefits of marijuana, and not young people, people our age, our various ages and all that. So our council does have a process. Any council member here, if they wanted to opt out or discuss it, could have put it on the conference meeting for this evening. I don't see it on the conference meeting, so we don't bring things forth without it being on the conference meetings.
Anything else? I mean, that's the way I was told to me, that they didn't like the state just kind of pushing it through like that, that they had been kicking the tires out since 2013, happily. Then they finally pushed it through, so we're stuck with it. And it's better to be compensated for our inconvenience, is the way people were expressing to me. So that's why I left it off, because no one has to put it on. All right. Communications? Our next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, January 10th, 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. This will also be, I believe, our reorganization meeting for city council, so just be aware of that, and on your schedule, it's an important meeting to attend. The polka dot lease.
Thank you, Council President. Before council, you have a termination of the polka dot lease agreement. The polka dot lease agreement was put into place in 1965 with Philip Pastor Jr. and Joseph Marrone, co-owners and co-proprietors of the polka dot refreshment stand. The lease was created because the building was erected 25 feet into the right-of-way of Elocat Street, and the polka dot has paid the city $40 a month to operate under this lease since 1965. We've never changed the terms or conditions of the lease, and they've always paid, and they've always provided great beef au lait and french fries. So however, when in 2020, the owners of the polka dot had reached out to me in asking about this lease that they inherited over the years and continued to pay, and they also decided to do an improvement project on their building, in that when they went to do that, they realized they were in a DOT right-of-way as well. So to have any improvements done to a building, they needed to enter into an agreement with the state. They entered into an agreement with the state for very similar terms of that of the city. For $460 per year, they'll be paying the state now, so they asked if we could terminate the lease with the polka dot. George, do you have anything else to add?
No. As the city manager indicated, it has been a long-term lease, given the nature of the right-of-way encroachment. This is basically a right-of-way agreement that they've decided to enter with the DOT. The DOT reviewed it and issued the right-of-way agreement subject to the general terms the city manager identified. Because of the existence of the state right-of-way, the city is comfortable that we do not need our existing lease in place anymore to address that issue.
And this would move to the next business meeting, which would be January 10th, 2022.
Any questions or concerns?
George, is the entire building in the state right-of-way?
I think a large portion of it is. I looked at the survey just recently, but a large swath.
So part of the building still could be out of the state right-of-way, which?
Probably 99% of the building is in the state right-of-way.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Okay, so are we in favor to, are we in consensus to move that to the end of our current business?
Yes.
Okay. 2021 Stop DWI Award?
Yes. So annually, the City of Batavia Police Department participates with the county Stop DWI program, and the 2021-22 award is for $28,681. And I'll ask Assistant Chief Camp to come up if you have anything further to say.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, a year's passed. This is a, we receive this on an annual basis. Basically, it's dedicated funds to assist our officers going out and covers their overtime rate to strictly be out there on the traffic enforcement detail to be on the lookout for impaired or intoxicated drivers. With that, there's also some money here that would go towards the purchase of some smaller equipment and some training of our drug recognition expert. Those are the next level, very important when it comes into identifying an operator of a vehicle who may be intoxicated indoor under the influence of something other than alcohol. So these monies here would go towards those details for the next calendar year.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So then we are in consensus then to move that to January 10th as well?
That's correct.
So that happens? Pointing members to various city committees and boards?
Thank you, Council President. I recommend that council approve the reappointment of Bernie Penfield to the Board of Assessment Review, and the term would end on September 30th, 2026. This appointment was reviewed by Kathy and Patty as well.
And he's a City of Batavia resident?
Yes.
So any other questions or concerns?
And she is a Realtor, correct? Yeah, she's a, yeah, okay. So that's great, she has experience.
I don't know how clever they're out there.
She's been a Realtor for 30 years.
Any other questions on that, concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to the next, we noticed the experts coming, that that's a nice thing? So go to the special business, organize business. Okay, that is, chemical bids?
Thank you, Council President. It has been a weird and wild ride in terms of procurement of resources for the city during COVID. The chemical bids, we historically get, we bid out right before the budget each year, and we have that price for the remainder of the year. This year, however, multiple times, the vendor we have been working with has come back to us, asking us to sign off on price increases. And due to the nature of the chemicals we're using at the water plant and as it affects the health and safety of our residents, we have signed off on a price increase so we could continue to get supply of these chemicals. However, we had, and Bill Davis, Superintendent of Water and Waste, did rebid this out, and so we have prices. You normally don't see this price coming through this bid this time of year, but we did it to try to lock in a price and still be within our procurement policy. So I'm asking that this move forward to tonight's business meeting for approval. This would be a switch in vendors, and I'll ask Bill if he has anything else to offer.
Well, we just definitely want to get locked into a price for the next 15 months, realistically, as we go through the following smart series of programs.
And we're not the only, obviously, water plant or water system delivery across the state or country having this issue. Chemical prices and demand for chemicals is high, and there's not a huge supply. So it is forcing inflation in this market as well.
So if we lock this in, they're not going to renegotiate it in the next?
I can't say for sure.
I mean, it's like they're already kind of helping us.
We'd like to think that this vendor would keep the pricing as we move forward, but because it's for the water plant and the supply of public water, to get delivery of chemicals, we'll do what we have to do. So I don't think we should have to go out to bid more than once in a year for something like this. We're a small municipality. Something larger like the Monroe County Water Authority may have the staff, personnel, and time to continue to go out to bid every time there's a price increase. George, do you have anything to add? Because we did review it with you in the onset of this.
No, I mean, basically, it's unprecedented supply chain issues. I think the vendors are clinging force majeure circumstances, and ultimately, we need the materials, we need the supply, so we have to make it work.
And force majeure is acts of God.
What did we pay on our last contract?
We started at 94 cents.
We started 86 cents.
86, and we're up to what now?
They wanted an increase to almost like a dollar and a quarter, and when we bid, it was actually a dollar forty-five, was the little bit.
Yeah, that was a thing of the, of the dollar forty-five.
Yeah.
I can see there. Yeah, I mean, hopefully, we can lock it in, and they'll honor that. There's always a way out of the contract, I suppose.
It's unprecedented.
Yeah, a lot of things are. Any other questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business? If that happens? And ice rink refrigerant?
As council member, a few meetings back, you approved the replacement of a compressor unit, one of two, at the ice rink. As they went in to make that replacement, and, you know, they basically come on site and build the compressor for you on site, they realized that we were low in refrigerant system, and we need 400 pounds, of which it cost us $19,800 to do. I did approve an emergency purchase because I was afraid running the compressors without the right amount of refrigerant could cause issues. So now I'm asking for council to approve the use of reserves to make that purchase. So right now, we have, after the purchase of the compressor, $371,000 of ice rink reserves.
Any questions or concerns? I think it was good forward thinking to get it started while we were not in session at that moment, because this would have been really bad damage to that system or something. Would have been a problem, a bigger problem.
And you're not forced to use reserves, and that's why I'm coming now to utilize those reserves. We could have this just be absorbed in operations, but I think it's more prudent to use the reserves for us.
Correct. Right, and this is important for them, that, you know, there's a lot of things closing down. It's nice to have some recreation, but isn't use that? All right, are we in consensus that we're there to tonight's business? Okay, let's move. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Dealey, seconded by Mr. McHale. Call the roll, please.
Council member Dealey?
Yes.
Costino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Wykowski?
Yes.
Jane Kowski?
Yes. Okay, I now call to order the business meeting. You've received copies of your November 2021 minutes. Any questions or concerns on those? So can we get approval for that? That's approved. You've also received the October 2021 financials. If anyone has any questions or concerns, we're going to do that. So we're all consensus to approve the October 2021 financials? It's approved. Okay, agenda items. 94, 2021, the reschedule, or the regular council meeting schedule through December of 2022. Mr. McGinnis. 95, 2021, the City of Batavia Finance Rehabilitation for Harvester and Richmond Avenue, the bond to get that rubber here. Mr. McHale. 96, 2021, the Police Department, that's the, isn't that the bond, Agent?
That's correct. The borrowing for the architecture and engineering portion of the police.
First of the two pockets, correct.
Correct.
97, 2021, the agreement for professional services. That's the, what's the engineer, what's that one for? That's for the?
Ken Correll from Architects Unlimited to be our owner's representative throughout the entire project.
Right. 107, Mr. Briggs? 98, 2021, the police surplus. 99, 2021, the acquisition of equipment for emergency personnel, I think that was like the radios and such, Rachel, am I correct?
I'm sorry, 99 is the, yes, the radios and the MDTs for the police vehicles, as well as bailout gear and helmets for the fire department.
Right. 100, 2021, the transfer of easement-related telecon trail and execute the easement agreement. That's Wykowski. 101, 2021, Lobella Associates for the Boer redevelopment grant. Mr. McHale. 102, 2021, the resolution request by the position of Human Resource Specialist to the Human Resource Director. Mr. McGinnis. 103, 2021, various committees and boards. Mr. Costino. 104, 2021, the chemical purchase, we just thought, wow. And 105, 2021, the ice rink emergency repairs. Mr. Dealey. City Attorney?
Yes, Council President, members of council, since we last reported, we have continued to stay busy working on a variety of matters, general real estate matters, general municipal questions from the city manager's office and various department heads. We've worked on some litigation matters as well as bond and finance matters associated with some of the matters you've seen tonight, but there is nothing specific to report on this time.
Any questions to the city attorney? Can the city managers report?
Yep. Tonight, I'd like to welcome the newest member of our non-union team, Angela, or Angie Dixon, who is the manager's confidential secretary. So she'll be getting to know all of the council members as she sends you emails and corresponds with you in the future, and we're excited to have her. I also want to talk about the mask mandate for all indoor buildings unless all persons inside are vaccinated. City Hall has decided to uphold the mask mandate instead of checking vaccinations at the door, so you'll see signs on city facilities for the mask mandate. It's my understanding, according to a press release that the governor issued on Friday afternoon and again on Monday, that this mask mandate lasts until January 15th, 2022. We are awaiting the executive order to make it official. The windstorm Saturday night caused widespread power outage, as I'm sure all of you know. Some people were affected, others weren't. National Grid has reported that 90% of the city or the area here in Genesee County will be back online this evening. I know there's still some affected members of our community, but I'm hoping that that will be alleviated very, very soon. This week and this week only, any down limbs that you have can be placed curbside for DPW to be picked up, and they've extended the, another week for the yard waste station to bring any sticks debris, or those who didn't get their leaves raked, to bring their leaves in. As you see, if you've driven around the city, the storm was extensive. The ground was soft, so if trees that might have been kind of on their last leg, had been in frozen ground, they might not have tipped over. Centennial Park, if you drive by, you'll see a few trees that came out right by the roots. So crews are going to work on getting the road areas cleaned up first, and then they'll move to the parks. So if you don't see activity in the parks, they also don't want to damage the grass by going in where it's wet and muddy. Is there any questions on that? Sure.
You said, let's say, where can you place the curbside?
Yes.
For how long? I know the yard waste station is going to be open through Saturday from 11:00 to 5:00, but?
Yep. So they'd like everything done by the end of this week so they can be prepared for snow operations. Yep, so we're given, you know, after any big storm, I've learned through Ray, obviously, that they will go around and they'll do this, and they'll pick up as much as they can, as fast as they can.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just put them in the parkway?
Yep, on the curbside is what Ray called it.
Are we going to plant trees to replace those ones that fell over and?
Well, that's something we're going to definitely discuss in budget talks. If there's any funding that hasn't been utilized this year for tree planting, we will, but we do have a huge need to plant trees citywide. There's a lot of aging trees, and when we do get into budget talks and strategic planning, we'll certainly dive into that.
There's been a common plus complaint, you know, not a complaint, but a notice from people that I've talked to who've come back from class reunions, holidays and things. They like the trees, they like the canopy, they think it provides shade for a lot of the streets. So that's something people notice, and I noticed we haven't planted trees in a long time, and as they get knocked down, they never get like replaced, and we're kind of losing them slowly, and we're now kind of putting them back. So I definitely would like to see something discussed on possibly replacing some of them, or planting so many a year over a five-year or 10-year period, something like that.
Yep.
Kind of make up the difference.
Absolutely. And we've, Ray and I have started looking at grants and different items. It's just not something we're probably going to be able to handle in the general fund without raising property taxes. So we're going to have to be more creative, and anyone that wants to donate to the city for tree planting, we had Summit Lubricants recently do that. We planted 15 trees on Union Street. We're happy to accept corporate donations, private donations. We'll work to acquire the trees and plant the trees, so that's always an opportunity too, when the community can come together and help with that.
Great, good enough.
Yes.
Can someone pay for an individual tree in front of their home?
Yes, they can. And they can pay to replace, have their sidewalk replaced in front of their home as well.
Or they can wait until we have a system, but sometimes it's not always.
Sometimes it's not a priority sidewalk or road.
Okay, continue.
The city center roof project is actually almost complete, the city center roof two. There were a few leaks discovered at the, I saw them during Christmas in the city, but the crews happened to already be on the roof, so they've addressed those on the roof one. Jackson Square went out to bid, and it came in double the price we had anticipated, so we have to put it back out to bid. We're looking at the scope of the materials, the scope of the bid we put out to understand if there's any confusion on the bidders. We're going to leave it out on the market for a We're going to leave it out on the market for a longer period of time, and we hope that we get more reasonable bids back when we put it out in late winter. Construction now won't occur until at least August, so the summer concert series can go on as planned there, but the improvements will not be made until at least August. Just a couple of job announcements. There's two jobs open at Public Works. Heavy equipment operator and a laborer, all the information's online. The Police Department and the Fire Department are both hiring off of new civil service lists as we speak. Candidates are going through that process. And myself and the department heads are working to finish up the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, the budget book and the strategic plan to be ready to present to council on January tenth. It will be delivered to you by January seventh. And that's all I have.
Yeah, do we have, does the city have an inside line with the power company? I had a complaint concern, actually, and the person called in, and they stated that they checked the, they called the company, the power company got the tape, and they were told that the tape said their power would be restored on the fourteenth, which is quite a while to wait, and they thought, geez, what's up with that? Well, luckily, it was restored yesterday morning, and, but.
So National Grid does an amazing job of communication with local municipalities. Myself and the department heads, most of them could join. We're on calls with National Grid starting Friday afternoon into today. Today was the last call. We do not have any ability to reallocate their resources, though.
No, I'm asking, is there anyone, do you have a number you can call and update information if necessary?
To update them or for them to update a resident?
Update us, so, you know, they put it on a tape, and that just goes on and on day after day. And people called in, and this was the information that they were getting off the tape.
Oh, I'll have to find that out because I only looked online. So when my power went out, I went online, and it said it wouldn't be restored for over almost forty-eight hours, but it was quicker.
Yeah, there's actually a map, and it shows all the.
But some, sorry, Gino, some citizens might not be able to access.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't because his computer's inoperative.
Oh, because they didn't have power.
So anyway, it's just, I thought.
I'll ask Dan, do you know when you call in? National Grid, do they, is it a recording or?
We don't call, we report everything with the county emergency management office. They, they have a lot of municipalities. They get inundated with phone calls, so we do everything through the county.
I'm surprised I didn't get a live person because I know some of my neighbors got to speak directly to.
I called a friend of mine in Buffalo, some executive, he just retired, and he told me what the wind limits are and all that, which was helpful, you know. They won't put anybody, even in an emergency, they won't put anybody in the bucket of over forty-five. Cut-off is thirty-five for normal operations, which this is. So I explained it to the citizen, and they were somewhat satisfied with that, so. They were concerned because some of the homes had small children and. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I would suggest maybe that's a plan somebody should have. But again, if before an emergency happens, maybe find some numbers or whatever. But at this point, like the chief said, once an emergency hits, everybody's out working, there's really probably nobody there to take the hundreds of thousands of calls that probably come in, so they just put it on the recorder, and I can see it. Then we've had that, this has been a longstanding problem, and we tried to call them as a police department and then our dispatch, and they just said, we'll get to it when we get to it, so much.
Our dispatch center wasn't even getting through to National Grid at some point.
Because all the lines are busy, because everybody's trying to call first.
They're just inundated.
Yeah. Are any other questions or concerns? Are you done, Rachel?
I am done, thank you.
Any concerns with the city?
There better be, right?
Last one up. Any committee requests?
Very short, but Christmas in the city was an incredible success. We had all kinds of people down there. Everyone was having a good time. It is thrilling. On the downside, that's how the tree grows. I'm sure it was a very bad, and they will be looking to sell, sell some very, very big shoes.
Anyone else?
And with that, chief, I thank your people. I enjoyed my ride in the fire truck, it was pretty exciting.
Any other business? Okay, resolution ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution scheduling regular council meetings through thirty-one December, twenty twenty-two.
Second to that, great. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-five, twenty-one, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds of the City of Batavia, Genesee County, New York, to finance the rehabilitation repair and replacement of certain city street improvements on Richmond and Harvester avenues, as well as authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds.
Second to that, committee? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-six, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds of the City of Batavia, Genesee County, New York, to finance the cost of design, engineering, architectural plans, specifications, and estimates for the potential construction of capital improvements consisting of Police Department Safety Headquarters, as well as authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such bonds.
Second to that, Mr. Beely? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution of the City Council of the City of Batavia authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services and project management built in the name of the city.
Second to that, Mr. Kennedy? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-eight, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to declare Police Department equipment surplus for the purpose of disposal.
Second to that, Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution ninety-nine, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Beely, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution of the City Council of the City of Batavia authorizing the city manager to amend the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for the acquisitions of equipment for emergency personnel.
Second to that, Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Resolution one hundred, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution authorizing the City of Batavia to accept the transfer of an easement related to the elicit trail and execute the easement agreement.
Second to that, Mr. Beely? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution one oh one, two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. Kennedy, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with Lobella Associates for engineering services for the Boa Pre-Development Services Grant.
Second to that, Mr. Byakowski? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution one oh two, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution authorizing the reclassification of the position of human resource specialist to human resource director.
Second to that, Mr. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
Resolution one oh three, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various committees and board.
Second to that, Mr. Kennedy? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canaly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Resolution one oh four, twenty-twenty-one, Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to award purchase contract for sodium hypochlorite.
Second to that, Mr. Beely? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Janikowski?
Yes.